Good evening. Welcome to the Lewiston City Council Regular Meeting on Monday, June 22, 2015. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilor Maldonado.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our next item of business, citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the city manager. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Do we have any citizen comments? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Eric Peterson, 904 Seventh Avenue. I'm here because I was at the Budget Committee meeting this afternoon. And I'm chairperson of the Lewiston Disability Advisory Commission. We're new, we only started in November, and this is my first budget cycle. And I learned something this afternoon. Frankly, I was shocked when I first heard something. Counselor Johnson asked a question about a TAC recommendation of $100,000 to Mr. Marsh, the financial officer, whether it was in the budget item. And he deferred to transfer, what do you call the Chris Davies in Public Works? And if that was in the budget. And both Chris and Dan thought this $100,000 was in the budget under the $100,000 general capital fund request for transportation. Having been one of the people associated with writing this recommendation, I was rather surprised because it was for a specific line item dealing with pedestrian, active pedestrian issues, which includes the ADA, which is sidewalks and cross cuts, curb cuts. I've talked to the city manager, Jim Bennett, and I talked to Mr. Davies afterwards, and I now understand there's a communication issue and problem that I didn't understand, but I would have possibly done things different. But we make recommendations from the advisory commissions to the city council. The city council then has to direct to the department folks if they want this line item recommendation in a budget. They would need to know that in the base budget, which is under Mr. Marsh's control and is not distributed until the citizens' budget thing, I think, is put out, which won't be until a couple of weeks from now, you don't know if that line item is in the budget or not. It wasn't in any discussions about things that were not budgeted and to be discussed, so none of the recommendations were there. So I assumed it was in the base budget, which I couldn't see. I have since discovered, no, that is not the case. Council, based on these recommendations, has to submit it and ask that it be included. I don't know that, when Mr. Johnson was asking that question, that's when I figured out and followed up and going, oh, my gosh, we have a big communication issue here that I didn't realize, because I also discovered council doesn't have access to the base budget information until after this time period. So the budget is set, or on the way to being set, before we even, I would have even discovered this, but for Commissioner or Councilperson Johnson's question. So I've supplied you with, the recommendations that were submitted since December circled those items dealing with this line item request to deal with ADA issues. And I, we've advised that, well, in 2008, the ADA had an amendment, which, I'll just summarize it, the most important thing, here the Congress wants the entities and courts to focus on compliance. So we're working on it, city's actively working on it, we're doing all sorts of things for this, but there's this communication issue that just popped up today that I think interfered with our learning process on it. And we don't have yet a person in the city who coordinates all the ADA compliance. I think we're working towards that, I think Human Relations is tasked with that, although we're still in the process of learning. I don't know if I'm correct in that statement or not, Mr. Bennett. But that's one of the things where these communications issues likely wouldn't happen if we had something like that, which is, I think, one of the things we're working towards. So I apologize for the length of this, but I was shocked this afternoon and what I couldn't understand, but now I understand, it was a simple communication issue because the base budget isn't available until after a lot of this initial work is done. So, yeah.
Crap. I know he can hear me. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Should we move on?
Should I tell the people on TV he's okay?
Mr. Peterson is okay. He has an issue that occasionally he gets a signal in his head and he falls over and looks like he's out of it, but he can still hear all the words, and he'll snap to here in a minute. Every trust in that, so, thank you, Mr. Peterson. Thanks, Joel. Okay. We're gonna move on, oh, do we have any other citizen comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item F, purchase of one street sweeper.
Okay. That will become active agenda item H. And due to the nature of a couple items on the consent agenda, they require a roll-call vote for agreements, contracts, or adoption of ordinances, so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, or to read the consent agenda by roll-call vote.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, is there any discussion? Okay.
Councilor Maldonado.
Aye.
Councilor Blakey.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Daniel.
Aye.
Counselor Collins.
Aye.
Approving the minutes of the June 1, 2015 work session, the June 8, 2015 budget work session, and the June 8, 2015 regular meeting. Accepting the minutes of the May 7, 2015 Historic Preservation Commission and the June 3, 2015 Transportation Advisory Commission. Approving a memorandum of understanding between the Idaho Department of Lands and the Lewiston Fire Department. Approving Resolution 2015-39 by title only. A resolution approving a state-local agreement between the city of Lewiston and the Idaho Transportation Department for the construction costs associated with signalized intersection improvements at Thane Road and Bryden Avenue, and Thane Road and Burl Avenue in Lewiston. Authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest said agreement respectively, and providing an effective date. Approving the administrative plat for Nesspurse Terrace Number 7. This is a two-lot subdivision located on Nesspurse Drive, north of the Village Center Cinemas. This subdivision will create the lot for the New Hampton Inn and leave a large remaining parcel of undeveloped land. And approving the vouchers payable dated May 22, 2015 through June 4, 2015, in the amount of $1,014,148.95.
Okay, counselors, the consent agenda as amended has been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Counselor Maldonado.
Aye.
Counselor Blakey.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Daniel.
Aye.
Counselor Collins.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to our active agenda. First item up is item A, ordinance 4630. This is a zone change, ZAO1, or zoning amendment. ZAO1-15 for possible second reading. I'll entertain a motion to read for the second time, ordinance 4630.
So moved.
By title only, suspending the rules, thank you. Got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
I have a comment.
Certainly.
I'd like to make an amendment and cross out the last three lines. So I move that we cross, that the last three lines of section B be removed. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 4630 on the second reading to remove the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City Council, may, as a condition of approval, require recreational and boat parking or additional open space.
Do you want me to make a comment on?
Please.
I just think that the market is a much better decision-maker on how many, or if any, recreational parking should be required. I think a developer, a property owner, someone who's actually developing the property, should be able to decide based on what the market says, whether or not there needs to be boat parking or recreational parking. I could find fault with the whole ordinance, but I'm particularly just focused on that.
Well, currently, as it is, the, correct me if I'm wrong, what it did say previous, what we're trying to clean up here is a minimum of one parking space per three dwelling units. And we struck that out. So currently, anywhere in the market, you're, under the existing ordinance, you're required to have that.
Yeah, and...
And that's what we're trying to clean up, because in some places, it doesn't, it doesn't work. Okay, Counselor Daniel.
And I'm cleaning up further by saying, it's a ridiculous requirement, anyway. Whether it's required or that the planning and zoning can require it if they choose to. I think it goes too far, I think that's meddling too far into what a developer or landowner is trying to do.
Counselor Blakey.
I can only make a comment that in my neighborhood, across the other side of Eighth, there's a large apartment complex over there. And I periodically will see boats and trailers parked on the street, because when those apartments were built there, Vineyard, there wasn't adequate parking for trailers and boats. And so I periodically will see them out on, I don't know what street that is, 23rd, I think, parked down the street there. I don't think they get to stay there very long, because we have enforcement rules that require them to be moved after a few days. But, you know, I do see that, experiencing that in my neighborhood.
Well, personally, I think, you know, if you're worried about the PNZ being afforded enforcement, I could maybe see striking PNZ, or they could recommend to the city council, but I think the city council should have that right to require it. It's just gonna depend on topography, neighborhood, and the market. Who are they marketing, you know, those apartments to? If you've got student housing, probably not gonna have a lot of demand for RV and boat storage. But if you have, you know, say, an elderly population, there might be a reason to have X number of parking spaces set aside for those things. So to give that up, I think we should still have that ability to require. I don't see, I don't see where it's gonna curtail any development necessarily.
Well, I disagree, but if you'd, I mean, you can certainly amend my amendment and get rid of the planning and zoning part and just have the city council.
I don't get to make motions.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Just to be clear, the amendment is to remove all of paragraph B.
Yes, and the impact of that would have, everything after frontages would be crossed out.
Everything after frontages.
Correct.
Okay, so the first part would remain.
Correct.
The no more than 50 percent part, that would remain.
Yes.
Okay. So really, the only change since the second sentence was already proposed to be struck is the third sentence, which was recommended for addition to the ordinance regarding the authority to approve additional recreational boat parking or additional open space.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Pro temp.
I agree with the amendment. I think that private developers are savvy enough to know when it's applicable and when it's not without governmental interference, so I'll be voting in favor of it.
Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment to ordinance 4630, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, motion fails four to two. Back to the original motion, which was ordinance 4630, right? To approve reading, ordinance 4630 by title only.
There's already been a motion and a second.
Oh, we have, this is the second reading, sorry.
Just the second.
To read the second reading.
I'll go ahead and make a further call.
Okay.
I'll see you.
Pro temp.
Well, okay, I would propose your suggestion, Mr. Mayor, since you couldn't make a motion to amend, that we simply strike the Planning and Zoning Commission, or the. So it would just read, the last sentence would just read, "City Council, may, as a condition of approval, require recreational and boat parking or additional open space."
Second.
Okay, so we're clear on that? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Well, the only question I would have is, does the city council ever have the sole approval of the requirement in the first place? Because most of these are approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's only upon appeal, or if there's a zoning question involved, that this would ever go before the council, unless it was a PUD.
Conditional uses typically come in front of us, don't they?
Conditional use permits?
Yeah.
I don't know, I would need to...
Variance is typically not.
Well, it's fine, I mean, I'll check with Mr. Plask on this.
Okay, and this is the second reading.
This is the second reading, so...
If we need to tweak it again.
Just wanted to make sure that...
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, guess we're back to, all those in favor of reading for the second time?
As amended.
As amended.
So, can we, what was the count on that vote?
That was six zero.
No, no, I didn't get a chance to anything, I'm a nay.
Okay, so five one. For the amendment. Okay, so now we're back to reading for the second time.
Okay, if you have a motion and a second to read for a second time in your discussion.
Okay.
By title.
Suspending the rules. Okay. So we're all clear on that?
As amended.
So, now, I'd entertain a motion to read for the second time, as amended, ordinance 4630.
You have a motion, you just have to take a vote.
Yeah, okay, so we're ready to vote?
Yeah, we're ready to vote.
Okay, all those in favor of ordinance 4630, as amended, for the second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five one.
Approving the second reading of ordinance 4630 by title only, an ordinance of the Lewiston City Code, Chapter 37, Section 37-163, Pren 4B, eliminating the requirement for recreational and boat parking for multifamily dwellings that are conditional uses, providing for the option to require recreational and boat parking or additional open space for multifamily dwellings that are conditional uses, and providing an effective date.
Okay. So ordinance 4630's been read for the second time, we'll tune it up for the next reading. Moving on to ordinance, item B, ordinance 4631. This is ZAO2-15 for potential second reading, amending City Code, Section 37-160, codifying the relevant criteria and standards to be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission in regards to conditional use permits, amending the City Code, Section 37-174, codifying the relevant criteria and standards applicable to applications for variances, and adding to the City Code, Section 37-181, codifying the relevant criteria and standards to be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission in regards to zone changes. I'll entertain a motion to read, ordinance 4631, for the second time. By title only, suspending the rules.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, discussion?
My primary problem with this ordinance as a whole, not necessarily what we're amending, is under Section A, the last five words, but are not limited to. So how the sentence reads, or how the area reads, is "Any additional conditions which it considers necessary to protect the best interest of the surrounding property or the city as a whole. Those conditions may include, but are not limited to." And then it lists the five, the five different conditions, which by themselves are vague, but "but are not limited to" is really vague. Basically, they can require anything. So I would move that we eliminate, under the paragraph A, so it reads, "Conditions may only include," and then get rid of the "but are not limited to."
So, to be clear, this is an amendment to change the existing language in the ordinance, not related to the actual...
Correct.
...proposed change.
Correct.
Got it.
Okay. So we got a motion and a second, is there discussion? Counselor Daniel.
Has wanted to reiterate that it, "but are not limited to," that is, that is so vague, how can you operate, how can you even plan to operate off the idea that when you go before a government body, that they can throw up anything? They can come up with anything they want to use as a, as a condition. I'm fine with if you're gonna have this process, having the list, which there is, there's five, there's five there, but to have it so open-ended that you can require anything, I just don't think that's right.
Further discussion? Well, I guess, Mr. Bennett, this will be another one for Joel to work on, maybe have him here at the third reading, so he can explain why that language, this language already exists, by the way.
Correct.
So he's not, okay.
Well, I'll just be direct, I don't think there is an answer. I mean, some of these ordinances were written many, many years ago, to try and guess why it was written that way, who knows? I think it's up to you all to decide whether or not you think that changing those words is a good idea or not. I don't know that Mr. Plask will be able to really shed any more light on it, it's not that kind of an issue.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Pro temp.
I agree with the amendment, I mean, why even specify the five points below if we're just gonna give carte blanche, blanketed power? Might as well strike all five of them and just say you have unlimited jurisdiction or
Well, having been on the planning and zoning for four years and gone through several different conditional use permits and stuff like that, there is a reason why we have these kind of ordinances, because a conditional use is that somebody wants to do something that doesn't really fit in what was originally there, okay? And that's why it's called a conditional use. So that's why we have these kind of ordinances. And yes, when somebody's asking for a conditional use permit, we should have, say, what can and cannot be done there. And we use the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission to come up with those, and they have to have their reason statement, you know, and all the proper stuff to present to us when it comes to us, so, unless we all want to be in charge of the PNZ and in charge of doing it, that's why some of the stuff is here. But I don't have a problem with the amendment. I would like a little clarification if there's any impact from Mr. Plask on. We need to vote for the amendment. So, all those in favor of the second reading of ordinance 4631?
No, on the amendment.
On the amendment, I'm sorry. I was gonna add, as amended, but...
I think you need to vote on the amendment and then go on the reading.
Okay, all those in favor of the proposed amendment, ordinance 4631, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that carries six to zero. So now we're back to the reading for the second time. So all those in favor of reading, ordinance 4631, as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries six zero.
Approving the second reading of ordinance 4631 by title only, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston, amending Lewiston City Code, Section 37-160, codifying the relevant criteria and standards to be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission in regards to conditional use permits, amending Lewiston City Code, Section 37-174, codifying the relevant criteria and standards applicable to applications for variances, adding to the Lewiston City Code, Section 37-181, codifying the relevant criteria and standards to be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission in regards to zone changes and providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance 4631's been read for the second time. Move on to item C, ordinance 4632, for a possible third reading and adoption, amending Lewiston City Code, Section 1-7, changing the general penalty for violations of the City Code or City ordinances. I'll entertain a motion to read, ordinance 4632, for the third time, by title only, suspending the rules.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Approving the third reading of ordinance 4632 by title only, suspending the rules, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston, amending Lewiston City Code, Section 1-7, changing the general penalty for violations of the City Code or City ordinances, and providing an effective date.
Okay, so ordinance 4632's been read for the third time, and we need to do this by roll-call vote. So I'll entertain a motion to approve, ordinance 4632, by roll-call vote.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded?
Counselor Maldonado.
Aye.
Counselor Blakey.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Daniel.
Aye.
Counselor Collins.
Aye.
Okay. So that carries. And I'll move on to ordinance 4634 for a potential second reading, and this is amending Lewiston City Code, 21-201, for the tree pruners examination. We discussed this at some length at the last meeting, so I hope everybody finds it meets with their approval. Got to entertain a motion to read for the second time, ordinance 4634, by title only, suspending the rules.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Counselor Daniel.
When I made the motion to amend this last time, that passed, I guess, maybe my, the intent of my motion... of my motion was missed, but I was perfectly fine with requiring one person who's on-site to have that license. But in the way the amendment now reads is that it requires at least one owner and one person at the site. All the intent of my motion was to ensure that one person at the job site had the license.
Okay, yeah, the owner, at least one owner of the business. But in all cases, a person licensed in accordance must be physically present at the work site. So that could be an employee present at the work site, needed to perform the work himself or herself, or direct and supervise the pruning work at all times. Wasn't that the intent? To have one person?
Yes, but I didn't, my motion didn't include, well, not the owner also had to have it regardless if he's actually on a site.
Okay.
My motion was just to ensure that somebody who was at the site had the license.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I can address that. I made it. What I gathered, and I can change it again, was that we were talking about pruning businesses, and what I thought I heard the council say was, if you wanna have at least one of the owners licensed, but not all the employees. So that's what is in that first section and subsection B. And then in the second one, perhaps it's a sole proprietorship or just an individual doing it, not a business. So that just means there has to be one licensed person on-site, whether it's the owner or not. But if council wants to amend it again, that's fine. So I'm sorry if I misinterpreted.
No, I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and support it. I'll take a further look at it and see if I can come up with an amendment, or maybe just leave it as is.
Okay. Further discussion?
I just wanna make sure that this person who's obtaining the license, it's much like if a plumber or electrician's getting a license. Once a year, anybody who is doing business in the city of Lewiston, cutting trees in the right-of-way, has to provide to somebody a copy of their certified license. And that has to be on file before they're allowed to do any work in city right-aways. Because the enforcement of this is gonna, the question is, who's enforcing this? Well, it'd be the police department, who'd be ultimately enforcing this. So like other licensees, how does that information get? How can the police, how will the police be able to access that information? Where will it be stored?
Oh, wouldn't be the police.
Who would enforce this?
Mr. Stark. He's the one who issues the permit. So he would check with the individual to see whether or not they had passed the examination. And then the ordinance requires that to be done every three years.
So even before checking with the individual, he should have, he should have a database of everybody who has already passed this test on file?
Correct, but I don't know if anybody has taken this test yet or not.
No, but in the future.
Yeah.
Whoever takes this test.
Right, it would be his responsibility to keep a list.
Maintaining a database.
Yeah, right. I think that was his understanding, is that he would be responsible for that.
And our police departments aren't involved at all, then?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'd just like to point out, the last line of subsection A requires the licensee to provide proof to the forester.
Yeah, I was gonna highlight that. So it is required in there, and he asks whoever said person provides that proof to Mr. Stark, or whoever may be the urban forester at that time.
Right.
Okay, any other discussion? Counselor Collins?
Mr. Mayor, this is a good catch by Clint. I agree that that first part of that there makes it sound as if, the way I would read it as well, that the owner must also be licensed. And I'm just looking at it from a perspective of business owner. I may know absolutely nothing about trees, own the business, but I don't wanna have to go take the test. I may pay somebody on my, that's one of my employees, to take the test to be certified, but I don't wanna have to do it if I don't need to. And the way this reads, it sounds as if I would have to also pass that test. So I'd like to see that stricken out.
Could that be changed to at least one employee of such business?
Lots in there, because the one, I'm sorry. That would still be in there, because one person at each job site would still have to have that regardless, so.
Mr. Mayor, we could change it to one employee. My understanding from council's discussion at the last meeting was you wanted an owner. But if that's not the case, I can change it to an employee.
Okay.
But I would just, yeah, like direction from, at least for the council on that.
Mr. Mayor, I think it was pretty clear, at least in my mind, from the way that I recollected, was that we said one person on-site or one employee, something along those lines. I don't remember one owner, so I'd be in support of it as written like that.
So do we have a motion to amend?
Well, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
So, a tree's gotta be cut. The owner of the business comes over and gives the bid, says you're gonna do all these cuttings, but he's not the one who's actually certified to cut the tree. So in theory, he hasn't gotten licensed. So in theory, he really doesn't know what he's talking about, because he hasn't taken the test. But he may be the one that gives the bid. Then he sends his crew over to cut the tree. Yes, that's where the licensed person is, but the licensed person may look at the job differently than the owner looked at it, and may cut the tree and do the job differently than what the bid was spelled out to be. Now, I can understand that the bid, the bid to do the job, should be done by a certified arborist.
Arborist.
Arborist. That the person doing the bid and the person doing the cutting should be certified.
I don't know that I agree with that, Counselor. I mean, the owner is gonna make the bid based on their estimate of what the cost to do the job will be. Now, they know who their employees are, and they know approximately, I think from experience, how long it's gonna take to do a job like that. I don't know that their knowledge of the actual cutting techniques is important to them being able to make a bid as to how many people, how many hours, how many materials they're gonna need, what kind of vehicles they're gonna need to make a bid that's competitive. But, you know, that's just my opinion.
I'd agree. It's, I mean, basically, these jobs are bid, and it's just a time and materials bid. Is how long it's gonna take us, this is what I'm gonna have to bring in. I've gotta bring in a boom truck, or I've gotta bring in some ladders. You know, difference in cost, you pencil it out. It's gonna take us four hours to whack the tree and yard everything off. Here's your price, and if they like it, they sign the contract, so. Further discussion?
Are you still looking for the floor, or?
I would, if somebody would like to make an amendment, a motion to amend.
Well, I was gonna do that.
Yeah.
So, we have a motion to amend?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I move that we strike the reference in Section B of ordinance forty-six thirty-four of the owner needing to have, or at least one owner needing to have license, while still retaining the section that requires at least one person on-site having the license.
In all cases?
Second.
Okay. So that motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that carries five to one. So now we're back to approve. Yes?
Yes, I also have an issue with a period of three years. I can't imagine that the tree cutting practices would evolve so much that we would need to get, the person would need to get recertified every three years. I think once would be satisfactory.
Well, that I would disagree with, but.
I'm kinda filling in for Riley. I don't know if you want Tim to do that, but I've had discussions with him about it. So I'll just tell you what he told me, was because the certification from the society is good for three years, and you can either get recertified or maintain your certification through continuing education credits. So if you look at what should be labeled as new subsection D, which I will change, it says, "They shall satisfactorily pass it every three years or maintain it with continuing education credits." So that's where the three years came from.
I guess I'm just looking at it from the perspective of, it seems like if someone was able to pass it once, that they'd be qualified enough to keep it without the continuing education credits. I don't know if we need to overburden them and require them to keep going back every three years, just to cut trees in the city of Lewiston.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
How do we currently treat it? How does, if I'm currently licensed through the city to work on this, how is that, do I have to go every three years before?
I think it's annually now.
Okay.
Right. But that certification is done through a process that the forester themselves puts together, like their own examination, if you will.
And that's what we're trying to correct here, is have a year mark.
Right, and this would expand that from annually to every three years. And as the city attorney explained the rationale for doing that. But it also gives you the opportunity to, you know, not have to retake, as long as you do the continuing education, which is fairly common for most professional organization certifications. You have to either do a certain amount of continuing education credits or retake the test. For example, the American Institute of Certified Planners, that's the way it works for those. They take the AICP test, but if they don't wanna retest, they do so many hours through courses that are offered around the area annually in order to keep up the certification. Familiarize themselves with new techniques, new things that have come along in the business.
Roll time.
I don't know if anyone can answer this, since Riley's not here, but do we know how much those credits cost?
I do not know.
Okay.
Counselor Blakey?
It's been my experience in my business that there's usually, there's always, there's somebody who's willing to pay that cost for you in the business world, be it a company that sells equipment, be it a service out there, they're offering to pick up your tab for the cost of certification for a half hour of your time at lunch or something like that. They provide credits available to you online.
Correct.
There are services out there that, if you seek them, you can find them.
Well, like I said, the last meeting, as someone who sold, who's provided chainsaws for a very long time, they provide all sorts of support, especially if said sawyers are buying the products from them. So that's a benefit of doing business with the company, so.
Mr. Mayor, I guess my concern is that we're creating a barrier to entry into the market, to where you have to keep coming back and getting recertified and keep paying to take these courses on and on, and so that's the issue I have with it.
Well, keeping in mind, the market that we're talking about strictly deals with trees in the right-of-way. This doesn't have anything to do with anybody's trees in their backyard, private property, any of that stuff. So if somebody wants to go make money out the city in the right-of-way, then yes, I think they should meet a little higher standard. Further discussion? Okay, so where are we at? Approve the second reading as amended.
Yes.
Coming.
Yes.
I'll go ahead and support it at this time, but I would like to see if maybe between now and maybe the next time, I'll try to research it a little bit. Maybe we can figure out something different where, once they get the license, they don't have to pay again and again and again throughout their career. If you understand why, I'm gonna go ahead and vote for it.
And I guess I'd just offer that, I think about every doctor in this town probably has to do some training periodically. Every teacher has to go through training periodically, and.
Every two years, I go through the Idaho Department of Insurance.
So, anyway, I'll just leave that comment there, but, okay. So, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries six, zero.
An ordinance of the city of Lewiston, amending, I'm sorry, approving the second reading of ordinance forty-six thirty-four by title only. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston, amending Lewiston City Code, Section twenty-one dash two oh one, tree pruners examination and providing an effective date.
Okay. Thank you. Next item up is item E, beer and wine license for Larry's Food and Deli, approving the exception allowed in Idaho state statutes twenty-three dash ten eleven B and twenty-three dash thirteen oh seven A for premises located at twenty-four twelve East Main Street. Would you like to introduce this?
Sure. This is Larry's Food and Deli out on East Main. They have a bar in the back that's been there for many, many years, and has had various owners over those years. Most recently, the licensee left the bar and they weren't immediately replaced by another licensee, so it was empty for a while, and so the license expired. So it had to be renewed. Well, during that interim, a nearby building was sold to a local church organization, and they've moved into that building and hence started to have, hold church services there. Our ordinance currently says that any liquor license that is proposed for an establishment within three hundred feet of an existing church is not permitted unless the governing body, in this case, the city council, approves an exception to that. So that's why this matter is coming before you. Normally, beer and wine licenses are approved by the county, so you rarely ever see them. But in this particular case, because of the city ordinance that's involved, it comes before the city to review. Now, I have understood from the business licensed department of the city that the church understands the situation, and they're not opposed to the granting of this license, but they are not here this evening to speak for themselves.
Okay. Counselor Dana?
I move that we approve.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve beer and wine license. Is there any further discussion? Alls I know is they've been selling beer and wine down there since I moved here thirty years ago, so I think the church probably knew what they were getting into when they moved into the new building, so I'll go ahead and support it. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries six to zero. Next up, resolution two thousand fifteen dash thirty-eight. This is approving a state and local agreement between the city and Idaho Transportation Department for the construction costs associated with safety improvements in the intersection of Thane Road, Gurrell Avenue, and Thirteenth Street. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution two thousand fifteen dash thirty-eight. So moved?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there discussion? Does anybody have anything to add? Ms. Gomez?
Because this is a resolution to enter into a contract, it should be by roll call vote.
Okay. But we need to read first, or do we just approve?
Well, you don't have reading of a resolution. I mean, you're moving to approve the resolution.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution two thousand fifteen dash thirty-eight by roll call vote.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion?
Counselor Maldonado?
Aye.
Counselor Blakey?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Daniel?
Aye.
Counselor Collins?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries six to zero. Next item is item G for vouchers payable for Lewis Clark State College from five twenty-two fifteen through six four fifteen, the amount of seventeen hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-seven cents. I'll entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable to LCSC with Counselor Collins abstaining.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero to one. Okay, the next item, street sweeper purchase. This is for a purchase of one street sweeper, and this is approving the purchase of the street sweeper in the amount of one hundred seventy thousand dollars, nine hundred sixty-five dollars by piggybacking on the city of Coeur d'Alene's bid. Mr. Bennett? Mr. Davies?
Well, no, I can handle this. It's not an issue. The bid is for the, a street sweeper that will be piggybacked onto the city of Coeur d'Alene. They had a fire, a couple of their sweepers were burned.
A couple of their sweepers were burned up. They went out to bid. Under our policy and under state law, we're able to piggyback on their contract to get the street sweeper for the same price that the Coeur d'Alene, city of Coeur d'Alene is paying for theirs. So that's the request before you today.
Okay. Well, for discussion's sake, how about if I entertain a motion to approve the purchase of one street sweeper?
Some moved? Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor? Pro Tem? Reason I pulled this is just to have some questions about the price. I don't know, what, what's the average price of a street sweeper?
Depends on type and.
The, the 2001 model that we're, that we currently have?
What did we pay for?
Sure.
Can't answer your question, counselor. I was not here at the time. Probably in the neighborhood, I mean, as you, I'll put it this way. If you look at what we budgeted, we budgeted originally $240,000. So I'm going to say that was probably what we figured the average price was for a street sweeper.
Okay. I guess I'm just concerned that if the average price of a sweet, street sweeper is around $240,000, that we're only able to get a $5,000 value for the trade-in. According to this email here in response to Keith Fingman, the street maintenance division manager, he was asking about the price for a trade-in and they're only willing to give us $5,000. Was there any follow-up discussion of that, that maybe we would ask for a little bit more? I mean, that's like the price of a trade-in for a used car.
Street sweepers are.
Excuse me, I'll come down with it.
Mayor and council, typically, street sweepers have a life of somewhere between five and seven years. They're heavily used, they're in the dirt all the time, so they're always have mechanical challenges. So to get anything out of a street sweeper typically is a good thing. So for the $5,000 trade-in, I think it's a good value.
Okay, so there was no effort to ask for more than 5,000? We just accepted that as a fair value?
We could certainly ask them, but I don't think anybody's going to give you any more than that.
George Schwank, purchasing coordinator. The $5,000 is actually good trade-in for this machine. It is over 10 years. And the equipment manager was very pleased with the 5,000. So he thinks it's above what we actually should be getting.
Counselor Daniel?
Is it still, is the current one, is it functional or is it broken down in a?
Functional, but has issues.
Okay. Could we use it as a backup? I'm, I'm thinking if we kept it would.
No, but as he said, they typically have five to seven years. They have a rough life and this one's over 10 years old.
But we're still using it?
Because we have nothing else.
If I may add, typically, when you get to this point in their life, you're spending more money on maintenance and breakdowns and it's in the shop more than it is out on the street. So it's, it's not worth it to have it in the fleet at this point to continue to repair it. It becomes excessive.
Yes, Counselor Blakey?
Mr. Davies, it appears that a representative from Clyde West, Craig Patterson, came to Lewiston and looked the model over. It says here, "Good morning, Keith. After reviewing the truck and the TYMCO sweeper with all the needed repairs, it looks like we can only offer 5,000." So he physically came to Lewiston, kicked the tires?
Yes.
And did he provide a list of repairs or just an estimate? Just looked at it?
He just came, looked at it and gave us an estimate.
Is this an item that you can, I, I know we go through very, various different sites and whatnot. Is this something you can auction off? I mean, is there another way we can get more value? I mean, 5,000 is, seems a little low if it's still a functioning piece of equipment that we're currently still using.
Well, we've had other sweepers in the past that we have either traded in and they'll say, you know, it's really not worth it, you just actually keep it. They gave us trade-in money, but told us to keep it because it wasn't worth it. We have sold a sweeper through the auction and this is about what we got for it. So I don't think if fleet manager is happy with it, then we're getting a good deal.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Is this something that we've discussed previously at all? I'm just wondering, because on the second page, where it's signed off by Mr. Bennett, Mr. Marsh, Ms. Gomez, and Ms. Schwank, it says, "Copy of council minutes and vendor's response to award," and that box is ticked. Were there any minutes to go along with that or is this, are we just talking about the minutes that are being recorded now or going to be attached to it?
Those are the minutes from Coeur d'Alene.
Oh, from Coeur d'Alene, okay.
Yes, showing that they awarded it.
Okay, thanks.
I would, I'd just offer a comment and I concur with Mr. Davies and enjoy. Those machines are designed, for one thing, and that's to get beat up. I mean, that's, they live a hard life. And if we can get $5,000 out of it, we ran equipment when I worked for Han Reynolds for years and some of it was getting to that point where it's physically costing more to keep it on the road than what the return on investment is. And I can only imagine, that's probably where this machine's at if it's 10 years old, so. Further discussion? Thank you. Okay, so all those in favor of the purchase of one street sweeper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Well, thank you, councilors. That concludes the active agenda. We'll move on to unfinished new business, city council comments. Do we have any this evening? Counselor Collins?
Just a reminder to the public, this Friday up at the airport is the dedication of a new kiosk that I believe is refurbished or actually might even be a brand-new one that was formerly up on the Lewiston Hill, recognizing Zimmermanley in his contribution to the airport and air traffic and, and basically commercial air here in Lewiston. And that's 2:00 at Friday at the airport.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just a brief one. You know, this last weekend was Father's Day. Hope everybody got a card and a tie from their kids or at least a phone call. I had probably the best Father's Day in a long time. I received a call from my son. Had a little weird twist of fate last week and fell down while running and they hauled him into the ER over in Bellingham, Washington. And they Saturday successfully stuck a defibrillator in him. 25 years old. My wife's over there with her sister who has the same problem. But for all you dads out there, just remember, you know, Father's Day isn't all about you, it's about your kids and give them a hug. So that's all I've got. Mr. Bennett?
I think so.
Okay. Advisory board and commission appointments? We have a couple openings. Yes, Counselor Collins?
The MSAB Commission has a nomination for an appointee, Kevin Duden, be a portion of this, this commission. I think most people are somewhat familiar with Kevin. He served as an intern and they rotated amongst a bunch of committees and MSAB now actively getting involved.
Okay.
So I would, I would move that we appoint him to this commission.
Got a motion and second. All those in favor of MSAB appointment for Kevin Duden, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Counselor Maldonado?
I'd like to move that we appoint Bill Cohn to the Lewiston Library Board of Trustees.
Okay. You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to appoint Bill Cohn to Lewiston Library Board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries six to zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Pro Tem?
We still have an opening on the Transportation Advisory Commission.
Okay. Anybody that's interested in the Transportation Advisory Commission, please contact Carey. Okay, work session agenda topics. I think we've got a couple of work sessions coming up in July. Anything big coming up for our first one? Would you be the sixth, I believe?
It'll be fairly full, but I, I don't have the list in front of me right now. But I think we're, we've, we've tapped it out for this, this session, so we'll have four or five items on the agenda.
Okay. And we'll have our next budget work session on the 13th?
Correct.
Before the regular council meeting. Okay. Well, at this point, I'll entertain by roll call vote to go into executive session, RE pending litigation under Idaho Code Section 67-2345, Pran 1, Pran F.
Some moved? Second.
Counselor Maldonado?
Aye.
Counselor Blakey?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Daniel?
Aye.
Counselor Collins?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries six to zero. We'll take a three-minute break.